I'm looking for it too. I know I've covered it.
Yeah.
And I don't blame him.
It's nice to see stuff, not get old. A lot of the schools.
Well, if you want.
Georgia.
It's four o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order. If you please stand and join me for the quick.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell. Commissioner Beeden. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandenberg.
Here.
Chairman. All of them.
Up here. We have a quorum. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I'd make the motion for the agendas presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Any updates? I don't have any from Greg on this. Any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
Thank you. We have no old business. We have some new business. Item 7A, antenna site lease extension between the RISA and St. Clair County.
I'd move this to be sent to the full board.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Greg did mention that most of these are just an annual, either a renewal of something or the grant applications that go out each year. There's only one item tonight that is for final action. So I have a motion and I have a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, fiscal year 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Agreement.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, fiscal year '22 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Contract and Revised Budget.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send to the full board. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7D, fiscal year '22 Huron House subcontract with mental health court program.
Make a motion, send to the full board.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7E, fiscal year '22 Blue Water DRPLC subcontract with mental health court program.
I'd make the motion to send it to the full board.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7G, business analyst for the court software project Viviente Software. I don't know if I said that right, LLC. This is for final action. Mr. McMillan is here. Is this your baby? So if anyone has any questions for Mr.?
Make the motion.
Make a motion. This is for final action, right?
This is for final action.
Okay, and I'll support that.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Very good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm.
Yes.
Chairman Baldwin.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 7H, St. Clair County Recovery High School Grant Application.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, other judiciary and public safety matters?
Just one. I'm going with this on your committee, possibly leasing. We got a thing from the GOP board, and they wanted one copy to be submitted to the board for any commissioner to review it. I just want to submit it to be part of the record. So they wanted this to be part, in case anybody wanted it, so.
Thank you. Any other judiciary or public safety matters? Information only. Any information?
Make a motion, receive and file.
Second.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Meeting adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Human Services Committee. If the clerk would take the role, please.
Yes, I can. We're going to that one, aren't we? Commissioner McConnell. Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandenberg.
Here.
Chairman Beeden.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Moving on. Any updates? Conceptual initiatives?
None.
Seeing no old business, new business, 7A Marysville School District nursing agreement for final action?
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Yeah, that's a roll call for final action.
Okay.
Spend our money, right? Commissioner Vandenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm.
Yes.
Chairman Beeden.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any other human services matters? None. Information only. We did receive the Health Department points of interest and some citizen comments.
Make a motion, receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Can I get a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
I know. Miracles happen.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committeeing to order. Could I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Vandenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell. Commissioner Rushing.
Here. So easy to forget over there down.
How about me?
Did I not get you?
No.
I didn't get you on the way back?
Duke.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes. Here. Item number two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Make a motion.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions about the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries. Are there any citizens that need to be heard tonight? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners?
Just a quick one. So I had that guy from Keywood that's in charge of the environmental, whatever. They have people that get assigned those tasks. I took him out to the landfill, maybe about a week ago, and, you know, Doyle doing that. He couldn't believe how clean, nice landfills. He's seen a lot of facilities, and he was like, this is really impressive, you know? I mean, and I just...
I tell people, it looks like a golf course. You pull in there.
Yeah. It doesn't smell like one when you go back though. But, yeah, so, all good.
Thank you. Conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
None this evening. Seeing no old business, moving item seven, new business, 2022 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program.
Make a motion, send that to the full board.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the Brownfield Redevelopment Application Grant. This grant could be up to $400,000. Is that right, Jeff? Okay.
Think we've received this could potentially be our third time. We received a million the first time, 400 the second time, and good. And what do we know on this, Jeff? Just because I know that funds pretty well, doesn't have a lot of money left in it.
Yeah, so it's typically it's about a five-month lag in the plan.
Okay.
And then after that, it's a very DRC, we'll be able to start to up nine months, 10 months from now. But that being said, when this grant is over, we're not out of business because we are starting to see some...
Receive some monies back.
So the brownfield authority is still in business.
Good. Thanks, Jeff.
Duke?
Yes.
What's the string? Is there any strings onto this grant program? Kind of almost like the repayment problem or issues with the brownfield. I know Marine City just had some issues with collection on one of theirs.
Well, it was specifically to this program. This is for these pure grant dollars that the county receives. And we take these dollars and use them for site assessments. That's a grant category that we apply to the city. So that is providing funds at the beginning of a project when somebody's considering acquiring property, and they know it's contaminated, think it's contaminated, or heard it's contaminated, or they're just not sure. It's still out for the due diligence type of act, too. So it's that. But we'll also pay for some of the planning activities, and that can be the development of brownfield plans. To answer your question, are there strings attached to these dollars? Absolutely not. The county's not on anything other than my time and a support staff from our department to administer the grants. With regards to brownfield plans, there certainly are some questions. I deal with some questions, but for the most part, communities, even with brownfield plans that are health harmless, they still continue to collect a level of tax. They were collecting on properties, whether there's a brownfield plan in place or not. It just means that if any new increment of taxes is created because of the new investment in a project, that for a period of time goes to repay certain cleanup activities that occurred at that property, get it up to, you know, up to snuff, if you will, and ready to reinvest it so that they can go from a liability to a good, decent asset.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any questions about the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Post.
I'm sorry?
Post.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Six one, Jay? Or five?
Five one.
Five one, yeah, okay. Thanks, Jeff. Item number C is the contract approval of the Marine City Highway Corridor. Mr. Struck is here.
So I just want to touch base with this a little bit. Obviously, we know our problems. We don't have any large tracts of land for turning down. We just turned down another big one the other day. Sick even talking about it. But so it's really to look at the 26-mile road, the corridor study, for, you know, trying to put some of these larger tracks in play where we obviously, as a board, have had conversation regarding our ARPA funds. We put a 26-mile road corridor group together, which consists of David, Dan Casey, Kurt Weston, Bill Hazelton, and the planner, Steve Cassin, who used to be the Economic Development Director, Planning Director for McCombs. He's a consultant now. And those were the ones that wrote the RFP. They did the interviews. We had three different respondents, and they went through a couple of different interviews, if I'm not mistaken, just to make sure that they didn't miss some things, understand scope. Am I stealing your thunder here? So this is a recommendation that's coming before us from this particular group.
Dave, there is no local engineering firm interested in bidding on this?
This is a pretty extensive...
That's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, we actually only did receive three proposals, and we ended up interviewing all three of those firms.
Okay, all right. So what's their next step after this is awarded?
So once we, you know, selected and solvented, we were entered into a contact with them, and then they were basically getting started on the work. And we're going to be looking at about an 11- to 12-month process. And that would make sure regardless of which firm was selected, that it's going to be extensive engagement with the local communities, with the plant operators, home counties, all those different stakeholders. So we, you know, they'll have their work out.
So when they're all done, they'll come back to us and say, yes, this project could work, or no, this project could not work, for whatever reasons may or may not be?
Yeah. And so, you know, when we first kind of talked about this a few months back, you know, we talked about the fact that obviously water is yours, a big priority, but you need to look at all of those other aspects in order to come to those conclusions. So they're going to be looking at all of those things, and us necessarily be turning over every rock along that corridor. And so at the end of there, we'll have sort of a game plan to move ahead using those federal funds, you know, in an optimal way.
So at that time, if it comes back in a positive note, would we enter into a contract with them at that time for design work, or would that go back out again for...
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be with them, and I think we need to see what bears out in the study. You know, we might find out some things that we weren't anticipating.
Sure.
You know, so it'd be pretty mature to say, you know, we're already starting to think about that. But, yeah, once we have this study, that should at least tell us exactly what direction we need to go, whether, you know, the ARPA funds are going to be a good investment in this particular area or in another particular area. So we need that study to kind of bear those out.
Very good.
I don't think there's anybody that doesn't think 26-mile road is potentially the next major thoroughfare into St. Clair County. If we have somewhere else, please let me know.
Yeah.
I mean, we talk about it, but at the same token, taking this to the next level, doing our due diligence, you know, if it doesn't, to your point, no stone unturned. We are going to take a long, hard, heavy look at it. You know, I think the community engagement to get an understanding and everything. So as we move forward, and if you're going to apply for different funding, like the road commission in line with them, you know, expansion of the roads, those types of things, this is the first step in a multi-step process. So...
Very good. It's exciting.
One question on, was Wade Trim selected because of their familiarity with, because I know they do the engineering for two or three of the communities already. Is that some of the basis behind paying 32% more?
I mean, that might be the sole factor. At the end of the day, the evaluation committee does have Wade Trim's more comprehensive scope of work in response to the RFP, you know, all three of the firms that submitted after the reputation. But at the end of the day, Wade Trim stepped up to all of those different sections that we looked at. So whether it was transportation, the stakeholder engagement, they didn't pass any meetings with the security committee or with those stakeholder meetings, whereas the other proposals may have only had, you know, a limit of four meetings with the security committee throughout the whole project. You know, and we actually gave all three firms a chance after we interviewed them. You know, once they had a better understanding of what we were looking for, to, you know, ban any revisions to their scope of work. And so in some cases, it actually scaled back on some of the public engagement. And I think public engagement is going to be key, you know, considering they're federal funds down the road that's usually an element that the federal government wants to incorporate into your use of funds. So like I said, in general, there's just more depth across the board. And in some cases, those other proposals add extra costs. So if you wanted, you know, additional travel allowance, additional meetings, potential other pieces to the market study, you're now adding in additional money that, whereas Wade Trim was just all income savings.
So had you asked for more depth than one of the other, you know, if you wanted more public engagement, they gave you a list for add-on costs?
Correct.
So that...
Yeah, like some market study, if you wanted certain elements of a market study, there'd be, you know, an added cost anywhere from, you know, $15,000 to $25,000 for that particular...
So all things being equal, they could have been closer to that number. They chose to make, to let you make the choice whether you wanted those things or not. Turns out you wanted those things.
Another good example is in Wade Trim's proposal, they're basically using this particular transportation modeling software, whereas another firm, if they wanted to do the entire corridor, it would make $20,000. So like I said, it was just comprehensive, right from the start. We thought they just had the best understanding for what we were looking for. So that's why the committee made the selection that they did.
Any other questions? Mr. Struck, while we got him on the hot spot.
You didn't have a motion yet, did you?
No.
I'll make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Dave. Item D, the 2021 County-at-Large Drain Assessment. Tony's in the crowd tonight. If anybody would like to grill him.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any questions?
I have a little comment.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate our current drain commissioner and work he's done since he's been in office. And if you saw the video of what was done over in Brockway, I think he did a very, very good job there. And I think he's doing a great job since he's been our drain commissioner. If you look at 15 years prior to him being there, there was very little work done. Back then, the budget was roughly $100,000 from the county. Now it's approaching $600,000, and that work has really done a lot to help our drainage out.
Thanks, Dave.
I remember we went over to meet with Bob because he submitted a budget that was double of what was originally always submitted. It was Wally, myself, and Howard, and we're like, what are you doing? You know, and then explain how it works and everything. We walked out of there, we gave him another $100,000. It was basically the drains weren't getting cleaned, you know?
Right.
It was a stalemate, you know?
One other thing, he does work with, and I'm more familiar with townships, of course, but he does work with every board to, on the finances. If they can't come up with the finances for that particular year, he'll spread it out over a period of time on grain projects. So that's also a big help to everybody that's within each township and the county.
Tony, you can pass that information on? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Landfill materials supply, this is an annual thing for asphalt millings and crushed concrete and stuff, just to...
Motion sent to the full board?
Support.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, private hangar parcel T-22 ground lease termination. Kathy's here, if anybody has any questions for one of her last meetings with us.
Motion sent to the full board.
Support.
Yeah, you hear a short timer.
She is a short timer. She was giving short timer hugs in the hallway when I came in. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Air Industrial Park Non-Aвиation Vacant Lot 64 Agreement for Purchase, Innovative Machining Solutions LLC.
I make a motion to send it to the full board.
Support.
Thank you.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Air Industrial Park Non-Aвиation Vacant Lot 63, write a first refusal for Innovative Machine Solutions LLC.
Make a motion to support?
Support. You made the...
Motion. Make the motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other environmental public works matters?
Just one. Don't, Jeff, you know, we've been talking about this, about potential funds for the different districts. I don't know if this is the place to talk about this, but I've met with four of the townships, and they're going to give me their proposals in writing prior to the second week of December, because some of them aren't going to meet before then. But they've all been informed. I'm meeting with two more townships next week. I'll also talk with the mayor of the city of Memphis, and they're all going to give me formal proposals on their intent. So I'll have that for our meeting in December.
Thank you.
Good.
Information only, monthly parks and rec finance documents.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Receiving file?
Support.
Support.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Phil, not here.
Chairman Rushing.
Here.
All right, item two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Make a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
Don't believe we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Any updates? See, none conceptual initiatives?
None.
All right. No old business. Moving to 7A, Resolution 2120 Budget Adapt Adoption of 2022. And we've provided that.
Deena, you want to talk a little bit? We're pretty good on time and stuff. And I'd always be remiss, none of you guys are around for the good old days when the budget battles were not fun. And room full of people, department heads, just was tough. Then I remember Bill Kaufman, Kerry said, hey, let us work through the budget process, let us meet with elected officials, we'll get this thing hammered out. And I said, there's no way that's going to happen. And guess what? They did it. And now, same thing, Kerry's and Deena sitting down with the department heads, working internally. I mean, we would literally have the rooms fall in. We were cutting people, and we'd be talking in front if we didn't know a position, you know? It was, they used to call beggars' night.
Yes.
It was, it was like.
I followed the sheriff the one night, because he'd give his deputy sheriff or undersheriff a raise, and then the undersheriff was making more than him, and then the sheriff, and that was all the previous.
No, it was not. It was a painful.
And then he'd say, I need a raise because my undersheriff is making more than I am.
It was a painful process, and I cannot.
Very messy.
Very messy, and I can't even begin to tell you from an administrative thing and how well they've been able to do. And one thing also, I've been on this board, obviously, a long time. We've increased our fund balance every year, even during the bad times. You know, I give Sean Grode a lot of credit. He was very financially strong. We used a lot of budget modeling, showed the five-year kind of projections and stuff, because everybody thought it was going to be a one-year blimp on the radar screen, you know, that kind of stuff. So we really made people aware when we, when we, you know, talked to them. We brought consistency into the organization too, just with whether it be the raises. I mean, obviously, we have different bargaining units, and different people used to get different stuff, and it was always just, we weren't consistent. So just kudos to Bill and Kerry and, you know, Deena moving this forward to, to make, you know, make life a little bit easier on us, I guess. So I'll start with that, but turn it over to you.
So the blue packet in front of you is the budget presentation, the 2022 total budgets of the General Fund. It has a balanced budget at $64,588,375. And what's included is a 2.5% property tax increase, 2% increase for common revenue sharing, 2% wage increase for all employees. There's a 1.5% increase to our pension contribution, which brings it to 27%. And that is needed to cover our actuarial determined contributions. We have a 6% contribution to the retirement healthcare, which is the same as the last year. Healthcare costs have actually decreased this year by minus 2% or 20%. The costs went up 0.3%, however, dental is down 6%, so that's how we get a negative. Most of the department budgets are remaining flat. We do have maybe some utility increases and maintenance contracts, small increases for those. However, supplies and materials are kind of remaining flat. We did include a $20,000 set aside for the just-in-law contract for next year. We do have appropriation to the Convention Center Debt Fund, $194,000. Some of those dedicated revenues were only for about eight to 10 years, so now the General Fund is going to be picking up part of that difference. It doesn't cover the full bond payment. We still have a budgeted contingent fee of $227,157 available. And I do have a couple of proposals for many table adjustments included. We are proposing to add three part-time penal custodians to animal control. And part of the reason for that is we didn't have trustees at the jail previously, so there was no cost before. And now, those trustees can't leave the jail due to COVID, so we're finding we need extra help. So we're proposing to add three part-time penal custodians for $41,794. And another reorg for human resources, they're working on succession planning. You know, at some point, the HR director will retire, and then they're trying to have some managers in the team so that they can train staff below them. So they're proposing to replace two senior HR specialists with two HR coordinator positions. So they'll be able to take on more, I guess managerial-type roles and pass down work to the lower employee. They also are proposing to take a HR journalist position and make that a HR specialist position. And the cost of all of that is $13,944. And it kind of just is a swatting cost from the General Fund, from the retirement and health insurance. And that's all I have. Does anyone have a question?
Do you want to just talk a little bit about the process for some of the new commissioners? How?
Um, yeah, so internally, we prepare wage sheets, probably a few times a year, I'm pulling wages and fringes, and then I send out the wage sheets to all the departments to verify whether or not accurate. We have the actuarial study that's done to determine how much we need for retirement costs. We get that, sometime October, we get the health insurance rate at the beginning of October. The departments, if they need any, any reclassifications, it'll be kind of done throughout the year. If they need anything before the budget is adopted, we kind of work with them a little bit to let us know their needs.
Can I ask a question about the Manning Table parts? So, like, to switch from the two senior HR specialists and then to convert, within a Manning Table, is it built in? So if you have, like, a clerk one, and I don't know what it's called within each department, I don't know if every department has a clerk one, clerk two, and then, um, so if you had someone who was just kind of great at this clerk one, and you wanted to promote them, can they move into that position from there? Is that when we get these internal candidate-type things, then, so I guess my next question would be, if you create two at a higher level of coordinator position, and you can't fill that immediately, is there room to maybe hire someone in at a clerk to move them into that? Can, can you move around that way within the Manning Table?
They would have to bring a proposal to the board for adoption or approval, and those job duties would have to be looked at by the senior resource director to make sure that this person is being worked with as classified or clerk one or clerk two.
So when they set to have two new HR coordinator positions, they have to hire four that level of person at that rate of pay with those duties? There's no?
Yeah, so they would be giving more responsibility.
Okay, we have motion to send it to the full board.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion?
2004, when I got on the board, it was $62 million over the budget. So we just got back there last year.
You took the chunk when I got elected? I've been here 11 years now.
Yeah.
It took you guys 17 years to make this $2 million back up?
Yeah.
It didn't take us that long.
And I might as well ask you, because I'm going to go through this. As far as the Convention Center, I'm seeing the expenditures, but I'm not seeing any revenues. Where would that be?
The bill will come in December. The special revenue plan.
Okay.
So we'll bring in 21 and 22.
Okay, but you do have it in the expenditures.
That's just the appropriation to help come.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, 7B, 2022 Pension and Retiree Healthcare Contribution Rates.
Make a motion to send it to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, Contract Prover Request for the Toledo Elevator. This is normal, what we do.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Health Department Manning Table Change Reclassifications.
I'll send it to the full board.
Support.
I do have one question. This one, this is going to be paid for with the grant, and how long will that grant last? If I read it correctly?
Um, yes, these will be funded. These are grant-funded positions, so typically, when the grant funding goes away, the position does go away.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7E, Health Department Manning Table Addition, Part-Time Public Health Nurse in this of her final action.
Motion. Second.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Beeden?
Yes.
Mr. Baum?
Yes.
Chairman Rushing?
Yes. 7F, American Rescue Plan Act Funds. Have a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed.
Did you have something? Were you going to say something?
No, just a few head questions.
Put your notes away.
At this time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters?
No, I just want to go back to that American Rescue Plan. When I saw the number that the county, you know, I had no glasses on, started counting the zeros, and I'm like, whoa, you know?
Well, I imagine that's very similar to the ARPA funds that the townships are getting, or?
Yeah, that's what this is, is the ARPA funds.
Um, and my son, the treasurer, I tell you, he's really involved with this, potentially. He's working with the grant writer for a $2 million grant to where the township would have to forward $200,000, and they can build a brand-new township into one facility to where we don't have the various buildings. I would save the one potentially for historical purposes, the old one that's, you know, easily 120 years old, and save that building just for museum or stuff, but potentially, they can, and I've talked to the other townships, you want to, I mean, Bill Dieter, he's talked to Bill Dieter, and he didn't know a lot of this stuff. He's been talking to MTA a lot, he's been putting a lot of time in on it, so, a lot of good stuff. So he knows a lot of the, where this money can be spent.
How much did Riley get? Two, 300 grand? Two, 300,000? How much did Riley end up getting? Do you know what their portion?
But the grant rate that he's working with is, it'd be a 10% match.
I'm saying, how much money did?
Uh, 300,000 plus.
Three, okay. Roughly one year, so, well, your budget's 400,000 out there.
Roughly, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I get an interesting, I went down and spoke at the Elginak Lions last night to give them a, you know, the 4-1-1 that, you know, we were working with, trying to do tornado sirens and morning sirens, because Harson's Island's been hit three times and doesn't have a single siren. And it's, it's a large tract of land, including the bays and all the cuts for the boaters that wouldn't have necessary, because our cell service might be a little spotty down there. So it's, and one of the district people from the Lions were there to give them an award out, and they go, well, Lions International would like to drop 10K to this program. Hmm, that's a half a siren, all right. And then the Lions Club go, we'd like to do another, like, either match that and make it a matching grant. So they could actually, we could actually purchase an extra, or close to an extra siren just by giving them the information. That's what we were looking at doing.
Well, that's a great example of dialogue, talking to your others. Here's what we got, you know? Here's priorities, does this make sense? You know, you go to a group like that, you know what? That's a good idea. Here's 10. Here's, you know, I mean, by the time you start passing a hat, you can, you know, can really get some stuff done.
And most of my, the townships all were in agreement, and they were even talking about help making it a net, instead of necessarily putting the siren in the dead center of their township. Cotterville offered to put one on their, at their park, which is on the very south border of them, but would help protect the Elginak State Park with all the campers.
Yeah.
And actually put a siren right there. And we all know what the problems would be had with Fort Trot, and, you know, and getting a siren in certain places is sometimes difficult. And it was been, I couldn't believe the reception I got when I started calling the supervisors. And, and it wasn't, how much are we on the hook for? That's what I was expecting. And that, well, what can you do? What can you do? So it was a good program. And like I said, I even called CASCO to try and help get the whole, anything south of 32 siren. And that, because it will help some of the other, even in the Western China Township, because the carryover with the, the five-mile radi, or diameter on the siren blast, it's an interesting how they do the, do the study. And George Rose in Clay Township had already had a lot of the legwork done for me, because he was planning on doing a couple, but we may be even putting up to four or five in Clay Township now, with the program we got going, so.
I'll be meeting with CASCO on Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. But back when I was supervisor, you may have done it at Fort Gash, and I imagine you have one there, but back in 2006, working with Jeff White, who put a sign up way back then. All right, can you hear? Okay, any other Ways and Means Matters?
Just two things, if I may. There are two bills that are going to be heard by the Senate, I think, pretty quick. One of them is Senate bill, or two of them, out of the three, I'm sorry. Senate bills 597 and 98, the privatization of the local public health, mental health system, and earlier this summer, I think the date they're running together for me, but we had adopted that resolution opposing these. So MAC sent out, the Michigan Association County sent out the form letter, if you're so inclined to send that, but it looks like it's got some legs again now. But we've, you know, I think that, that opposition resolution was unanimous, so I don't know if everyone saw that one, but it's, it's coming to a head, I think, pretty quickly. And then the other one for coastal communities is the short-term rentals. And I've spoken with Dave Struck a lot on it, I know MTA is heavily involved in it, but the short-term rental bill did pass the House by 55 to 48, and now it will be heard by the Senate, I think, pretty quick too. So if you have any opinions on that, it might not be bad to reach out to Lawrence on any of those three bills.
Okay, any other Ways and Means Matters? All right, saying none, information only. Can have a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.